I'm going to bring my.
I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. The work session, Dr. Johnson, take it.
Yes, good evening, Board. Obviously, we've begun or have been undergoing a comprehensive assessment of our facilities. We asked MGT, Mr. Dan Schmidt, to come in and kind of provide us an update on where we are, where we've been, and some next steps. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Schmidt at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. Dr. Johnson, good to be with you again this evening. Glad the weather has cooled off a little bit, even from back home, and what you all have been expecting here or experiencing here. Good to take just a few minutes and bring you up to speed on what we have been doing and where we see things going over the next couple of months as we come to a conclusion on this project. As Dr. Johnson said. It is on. Maybe we'll turn it off and then try it back on. Yep. Okay, so a simple agenda for this afternoon. Where have we been? What have we learned? And where do we go from here? Want to start out talking about where we've been, just sort of reset everybody's minds on everything we've been doing over the course of the last year. We kicked this project off back in January. We met with academic leadership to get an understanding of the kinds of things you're trying to do academically, what you're trying to do in the classroom for kids, what is the vision for the academic programming and the ultimate success of students here in Hamilton County schools. We translated what we learned in those sessions into the Educational Suitability Guide that served as our reference guide for going out into the schools and conducting the suitability assessments. And then we assessed 74 schools. We did not assess Hillcrest and Harrison for different reasons, but we went into 74 schools, applied those standards for educational suitability, also looked at the buildings and the grounds from a condition perspective and the technology infrastructure in those buildings. That was March and April, may have bled a little bit into May as well. At the same time, March through April, we were looking at the capacities of each one of the buildings. When we walked those buildings, we counted up the number of instructional spaces and calculated a capacity for each one of those buildings based on the way the building is used. We also prepared an enrollment forecast for the district and for each one of those schools. That was in May and June sort of timeframe, identifying where growth was coming, how it was going to impact each one of the schools, why that growth was occurring, where growth might not be expected to go quite as fast. Spent June and July going through an intensive quality control process, working with administrative folks, understanding from their perspective and experience, did they see the same things when they walked through buildings and understanding the capacity of those buildings or the condition or the way that the local demographics were going to factor into future enrollment. Did a lot of work on quality control. And then came to you in July after spending June and July developing a preliminary look at facilities recommendations. We took all that data and put it into our large matrix. Now, I know you can't read that with the light shining on it. Really, even the color doesn't even necessarily matter so much, it's just seeing the volume of content of data there. It's even just a subset of all of your schools. And I put this up here just as a reminder for everybody that we took all that data, we put it into a common repository, our common matrix, so that it helps to infine and inform our intuition on what the ultimate recommendations are for this school district. The things that we saw, enrollment will continue to increase district-wide, something on the order of 7% over the next 10 years of an increase, $1.36 billion in deferred maintenance and programmed efficiencies are what our assessments identified across this district. Your 74 schools have an average capacity, average size as measured by capacity of 695. And then we looked at each one of the grade bands to see, well, across the district, what does it mean utilization-wise at your elementary, middle, and high school levels for the way you are using those buildings? And we talked before about how our target range is between 80 and 95%. Those are the green. Yellow either means, as the case is the case with your elementary school grade band, 97 and ultimately 103%, 10 years out, an overutilized situation getting inefficient use of that space. 74 and 78% at the middle and middle-high grade band, that's under the 80%, also cautionary because that's an inefficient use of space on the other end of the spectrum, having too much capacity. Some things that we learned. Things we were trying to do as we thought about what do we do with this data, the objectives of facility planning. First, reducing the overall cost to address deficiencies. How can we bring that $1.36 billion number down? How can we find ways to do that? Secondly, finding ways to reduce the number of schools and increase the number or the overall size on average of those schools gives you more efficiencies in operations and economies of scale. And then optimizing available school capacity, anticipating that increase in enrollment, making sure that the capacity is where it is going to be needed. While enrollment is growing across the district, you do have areas where there's some declines in enrollment, some areas where there are increases in enrollment. We want to be sure that we are optimizing capacity to match up with where those different changes are happening. All of this aligns with the goal within the Future Ready 2023 of efficient and effective operations. So there's a lot of synergy with what you're trying to do in the bigger picture, not just with your facilities, but with everything here in Hamilton County schools. This slide should look familiar, I shared with you back over the summer. Just a summary of what our preliminary thoughts were on recommendations that you might use in order to get to the impacts down at the bottom of reducing $1.36 billion down, in this case, to 855 million, decreasing the number of schools from 74 to 63, increasing the average school size, and then optimizing that school enrollment utilization you can see out to 2028, '29, being firmly within the green across the board. Nothing changed on this slide from what you've seen before. Just a summary, getting everybody back to thinking about where we were before. Now, where do we go from here? We have been spending time since July wrapping up the final pieces of data collection. If you recall, some of the things we talked about, we had some capacity questions still lingering, a couple of schools where we hadn't quite figured out exactly how to best characterize the use of that building, East Hamilton High, Middle High being chief among them. We have now resolved those issues and feel confident that we've exercised complete quality control on our capacity numbers. That part's wrapped up. We had a couple of buildings that we still needed to go out and assess, the service buildings for physical condition, but also we had not been in Snow Hill Elementary to do the suitability and technology readiness yet because when we were there in May, the addition was still under construction. The rest of the building was getting ready for the end of the school year, getting ready to relocate to the new part of the building. Nothing was operating like it normally would, so it didn't make any sense to try to assess that suitability. I was out there this morning and went back, got that taken care of, will do my data entry. Plan is tonight, quite frankly, get that out of the way, we'll quality control that and get that all wrapped up. We had a couple of other straggling pieces of data collection that we'll have done by the end of the month, so we're wrapping that piece of this up so we can put a bow on the data collection. We've taken all the data collection, the enrollment, the capacity data, all of the academic visioning pieces, and started to prepare the draft support chapters for the report. Okay, now, that's purely process on our part, but I share that with you so you know that we're gearing up toward the conclusion, we'll get to here in a moment, but really zeroing in on what are we doing with the recommendations because all the support pieces are getting finalized, including the physical report chapters that will be presented to you when we're all said and done. Looking ahead now, conducting community forums and focus groups, and then finalizing the report. In terms of some specific timelines, actually, I'm going to do, no, we'll stay here. Final report components. All these things here, I won't read each one of the bullets, but these are, this is all the different kinds of things that the final report will have in it. And the supporting data chapters that I'm referencing are the demographics and enrollment capacity utilization. I guess I'm going to read it to you. Facility assessments, and then the recommendations themselves, along with all the appendices, including all the reports that go along with the assessment data so you can see why something got a fair or a good or an unsatisfactory score with a comment attached to it for what we saw and generated that score. All that detailed information will be a part of either the main body of the report or within an appendancy. And then finally, some specific dates. As I say, back from July, excuse me, July to here in September, we've been finalizing and finishing up the data collection, got that really close to wrapped up and drafting those initial chapters. October and November, we're going to work with the district to put a survey into the field, start to ask the community some questions about their reaction to the preliminary recommendations. That all sets the stage then for December where we will have five community forums and two focus groups, locations and specific times to be determined, but five community forums, two focus groups, seven meetings total. January then, in the balance of December, we're going to spend time revising the draft recommendations based on what we heard at those forums and based on what we heard from the survey and in the focus groups. Come back to the board then late January, say, here's what we heard and how we've made some changes. Go back out to the community in February with three more community forums, get feedback then on the revised recommendations, all leading up to a delivery of the final recommendations and the final fully completed report at the March 19 board meeting, six months from tonight. So, the long and the short of all of that, a lot has been going on over the course of the last year, a lot's been going on since we were last together in July, a whole lot is going to be going on over the next six months as we bring these recommendations to their complete forum and back to you for your consideration for action after that. Be happy to answer any questions you might have at this point. Dr. Johnson, you have anything you would like to add to that?
Mrs. Thurman.
I just have the five community forums in December, I question. We have a lot of band concerts, a lot of those kinds of things for the community forums. December's an awful busy month. We're out of school an awful lot in December. Is this something you might want to consider?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. I didn't put it specifically on this slide, but we are looking at the first week of December as the time we would do that. Getting too late, frankly, much past that would be very difficult, as you say, to get a crowd together. That last, the first week of December still is a time that works well for us from our experience.
Mrs. Hill.
Thank you. I agree with Ms. Thurman that we need to make sure we've got maximum participation at those community forums, so the dates are critical. Can you please tell us more about the online survey? You said it would be for the community, it would be a reaction to recommendations. Help me understand that a little bit better, please.
So let me take a step back and describe the forums for a moment. We're going to use technology.
So the forums will come after the online survey?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're going to work in tandem.
Okay.
And here's how. For the forums, we will have a presentation, this is what we're thinking about in terms of recommendations, then ask the participants to respond to a series of multiple choice questions using clickers. Everybody will have a clicker in the room, they'll be able to answer A, B, C, D, or E depending on the nature of the question. I tie that to the community, to the online survey because the questions will mirror the forum questions. They'll work in concert together, so it's the same kinds of feedback that we're gathering, how to react to this particular recommendation or that particular recommendation, so that we're getting really two months of information from the surveys and then also then the community forums.
So, so the survey will have, how will you give that survey context? When somebody gets a survey in October or November?
So we'll attach with that a copy of the report that we presented over the summer so that there is information that can be put with that. Folks that are applying or submitting answers to the survey can look through that slide presentation and see, here's what we're talking about and how it relates back to the questions that are being asked.
So that slide deck that we received at the preliminary meeting was more than 80 pages long. Doesn't have page numbers. Are you all going to link that up with every question about a given school? Are you going to have hot links within that survey that open up easy-to-use windows so I don't lose my place in the survey so that I can see? Here's what's happening, here's the recommendation for CCA, and here's the recommendation for how it would get moved, and here's, like, how is the general public going to be able to really give you solid feedback on that? Because to me, giving somebody, I mean, it takes me two hours to walk constituents through the big idea of this, so.
Yep. I don't know the specific mechanics on how we will provide that connective tissue, but it is something that we are sensitive to and know that that needs to be there. So I can't describe for you exactly how we will cross-reference and make that work, but I can say to you that we share the concern that there would be an ability for someone to understand what a question is asking tied to a specific piece. I don't know exactly what that looks like standing here at this moment, though.
How is the survey going to be distributed?
Yeah, we'll work with, we'll work with them once everything is connected. We'll have a chance to preview the survey. We'll make sure you all have access to the survey as well before it goes out, and we'll work to push it out through the district as well as, you know, different, whether it's, whether it's pointing them there through School Messenger, posting it on the website, we'll push it out as we push out other surveys across the district. So we'll make sure every household in our system has access to it.
So something that I've found is that people, people within our communities at large care a great deal about public education and about the schools in their communities, whether their children or grandchildren or nieces or nephews are in those schools right now or not. So as we consider the publicity plan for the survey, we need to make sure that our communities at large are encouraged to participate in that. It's going to need to be a really short URL and something, something easy to get to. Also, I feel like we, sending a survey about that massive preliminary report has the potential to cause a lot of concern at a very early stage. Like, already, we have people who are very worried, and without full context, aren't, they just, it's difficult for them to comprehend where this plan, where this report fits in the bigger picture of how our system will move forward. So I love the idea of a survey to the community to get more voices involved. It's something that you all will continue to hear me advocate for, more community voices. But if not done well, it could deliver data that's not especially helpful and could really frustrate our community. So I, okay, so I'll put a pin in that. Community forums, five community forums and two focus groups. So, Dan, talk us through what a community forum is going to be like. You said there's going to be clickers to answer questions, there's going to be a presentation. That makes a lot of sense. You would give it context within the presentation?
That's right.
And so what about feedback? Will people have the opportunity to take the mic and ask questions?
So the structure that we use, we don't do an open mic. We allow the clickers to be the form of providing feedback and input in a much more structured way. Open mics tend to, as you said a moment ago, tend to get to a lot of information, but the clickers provide us with more useful information. So we like to get those clickers, it allows us to see, we can ask demographic questions, what part of the district do you live in, and tie that to different answers to questions. We can tie it, one question to another, building off of, it's not, if you answered A here, then we go over here, but we can, we can do a little bit of cross-tapping to see how different types of groups are answering different questions. So it provides it, and it's also quick, frankly. We can get through a lot of questions in a relatively short period of time. It won't be a three-hour presentation like you all got back in July, abbreviated version, but that brought enough context in order to be able to answer questions, two hours in length total, and then those questions providing us with quantitative data from which to be able to draw conclusions and identify trends.
And then tell us about these community forums in February.
So the idea, I'm going to back up for just a moment, the back is, the idea is that in December, we're building off of what we presented in July. We then have the December forums where we gather input on those preliminary recommendations, those preliminary thoughts. We go back and revise those recommendations and then go back out for another round of meetings. Okay, we listened to you in December, we've reworked some things, have the two focus groups also. Now, here's the next iteration of thinking, respond to that for us. Okay? And it'd be the same sort of format.
What about these focus groups? What's the format for those? How many people are in them?
I like to do focus groups somewhere on the order of 15 to 20 people. Specific composition of those groups, we haven't identified that yet, that's still open discussion. Facilitated by myself, and that's much more intimate setting, let's really dig into why you're saying what you're saying, and hear from other members of the community that might challenge or might support what the particular person is saying. But specifically where, who, those decisions haven't been made yet.
Two other questions, and then I'll hand the floor to somebody else. Capacities, I've had some, some questions from the community that I wasn't fully able to answer about portables, and I just got a little confused, and when you said counting service buildings, I wondered if that, so help me understand how portable, so for example, I represent Lookout Valley Middle High School, and we have some absolutely ancient portables. I don't know that you could move them anymore, they might fall apart, or they're, the trees have grown into them. So, does that count in the capacity number?
No.
No, okay.
We inventoried the number of portables.
Okay.
But for purposes of capacity, they were excluded from the calculation.
Okay. And then the other question I had was about enrollment forecast and demographics. So I know you used a very scientific method to estimate how many children we would be anticipating in a given region of the county for, for different schools. But two things have stuck in my mind. Number one, Lookout Mountain Elementary School is a school in my district, and the preliminary report is suggesting that their numbers of students enrolled will go down over the next 10 years. We saw 20 additional students at the school this year. But what the community has also felt the immediate impact of is a softening of real estate markets, and I almost wonder if it becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy of we will have fewer students, and if we say that this school should be shuttered, then we in fact will have fewer students because fewer students, families will choose to live in this area. So that's one question I have about demographic, but bookended on the other side, which is that Lookout Valley Middle High School, right now, has a great deal of capacity opportunity. And you all have recommended going K-12, and personally, I think that's a pretty fascinating idea. But Lookout Valley Middle High School is on a rocket ship course to greater rigor, tremendous academic achievement on the part of its students. I just feel like it's, it's about to, we're going to get to the tipping point in four years, and are we going to be bursting at the seams? So help, give me a little bit of clarity and maybe some, some help on getting comfortable with this demographic 10-year-out conversation.
So a couple of things to, these may not be necessarily in logical order in response, but ideas that come to mind.
That's fine.
The first thing to understand, we, when we're doing our enrollment forecast, we're building it off of reliance on historical data, right? We look and see not just historical enrollment, but we're looking at historically where population trends have been, where has the overall population grown, what has housing done in different areas, and then we're making some assumptions based on the historical data and what it sounds like will happen moving that forward. We use four base models as our underlying models for our enrollment forecast, and then the weighted average of those four models is our actual forecast number, okay? And we weight that according to various areas of the district and different dynamics to get a line that, that fits the kind of dynamics for that particular area. It is not a crystal ball, right? We have to say that right up front, it's not a crystal ball. It's proven very effective for planning purposes in districts across the country for three decades, but it is not a crystal ball. So when it comes to things like, what if things turn around and we burst at the seams in 10 years, and then forecast winds up being wrong, or at least off, there, that's the level of risk tolerance that the board will have to determine for itself, the confidence level that you have in what those program changes might do and how tightly you want to tie yourself to a facility solution that might, that might hamstring you in the future. Okay? Now, knowing what the trends in the past have done and what that suggests for the future for the schools up on Lookout Mountain, we felt comfortable with a forecast that shows declining enrollment and space to be able to move things around in terms of use of the middle-high school down there. And from a planning perspective, that all felt very sound. The impact on, on the real estate market and the other self-fulfilling prophecy, your point's well taken, and I would not dispute that, I wouldn't say that that never happens. Whether it's happening right now or not, I think is up to conjecture, but it's not something that we would quantitatively or even qualitatively try to factor into our forecast because it's just sort of three rings out from what's reasonable for the assumption.
Right, it's outside of your scope of work.
That's right.
I see, okay. Thank you, Dan, for that, that information. So this year, Tucker, you have been our facilities point person. I don't know if that'll be the same for next year or not, but something I'd like this board to consider as part of the, perhaps not this MGT survey, because I recognize MGT has a finite scope of work, and really, we're looking at one part of our strategic plan here, which is efficient operations. But as we think about the other side of that, effective operations, and then the other four parts of our strategic plan, I think we need to be talking to our community about the, the vision that we as Hamilton County have for our public schools. Because, I don't know about you all, but I quickly got a lot of phone calls about mega schools. People have a lot of questions about that, and there's a, it's just a big conversation that we need to have. So I like the idea of a survey to be able to get a lot of input quickly as one tool in our toolkit, but I hope that we will ask questions when the time is appropriate that are about more than just the physical building, but the, the what and the why of the kind of system that Hamilton County community wants for our children and for our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLennan.
Can you just walk me through why we were pushed back three months? I know in July, when you gave us that big report, I was expecting, and per that slideshow, to have community meetings going on this month and next month, and then have a final report in December. And frankly, I've been telling people, we'll be having meetings in September and October, and now have to go back and say, no, it's going to be, you know, the first of the year, end of the year. So, you know, just a little about, I mean, I didn't see anything new here tonight. I know you had to do Snow Hill. We've been in school for about a month and a half there, and we're getting that today done, and just walk me through the, the three-month kind of delay there.
Yeah, I'm not sure I'd use the word delay, but simply.
Well, it was December, now it's March.
Fair enough. We needed to work through that data collection, that was one. The second was getting, working through the dynamics of, of how the report was received and what a final product needs to look like. We were trying to identify what the right number of community forums were and what the timing would be for those, and coming to a place where we resolve those decisions. the timing would be for those, and, and coming to a place where we resolve those decisions also aligned quite pragmatically with my staff's schedule and where we're committed with other projects. To be able to come in and do five community meetings in one week, it became difficult to find a time when we could do that just physically from our own schedules. That really wound up being the biggest driver in pushing us into that first week in December. Wish we could do that earlier than that, but that's how we wound up where we are. Being able to add the two focus groups actually goes a little bit beyond what our contract calls for us to do, but we're going to be here those, that week anyway. We can add those focus groups to the, to the mix. That also gives us time that week in order to have other meetings with internally, perhaps the board members, in order to get more information that way as well. But then adding the other two, the other three meetings rather, later in February, it was a matter of making sure that, that holistically that made sense with an ultimate deliverable. And it became difficult still to get that done within everything else that was happening with getting everything pulled together by December. So I, I don't mean to be argumentative about the word of the use of delay, you're right. It's, it's longer than what we had talked about. At the end of the day, I think it's going to be better than what we talked about.
Yeah, just, I would say just keep us updated, you know, I don't know if that's going to come through Dr. Johnson or whatever. I don't know how long this timeline has been alive, but I was telling people Tuesday night, you know, hey, be on the lookout for community meetings this month and next month, and now I have to tell them, hey, it's going to be another two or three months. So just, for our sake, we're dealing with a bunch of people that are, you know, it's, their schools are closing, are they not closing, are they moving or what? So just make sure that, that we have a little more up-to-date information on that.
Thank you.
And I think, and I'll say this for Dan and Justin, literally, this, this timeline projected, really, we're just in the infancy stages to finalize and to want to get feedback from you all on the timeline as well. In reality, in January, you'll see, I think you said you have a revised draft that would be ready. You know, I think those three meetings in February through additional opportunities to reengage after having a revised version could be very helpful. Obviously, you know, he'll have a revised version prepared in January and bring that to a board meeting, and so absolutely, we'll work with and through them. The other thing I was going to mention, as this conversation has gone on, we can work on over the next couple of weeks, but as, the same way we did with the budget as far as creating a web landing page, and I can probably speak a little more intimately to this, we will establish one for this build-in process. We'll obviously separate MGT, I'm sorry, Dan, we'll, we'll make sure it's very clear that MGT is doing a body of work, but the district is doing a body of work from the standpoint of engaging and making sure that it's understanding and trying to draw a clear picture. So the next couple of weeks, we'll do that as, as well to make sure that that's, that's living, we can point people there. I believe that the presentation was YouTube, so we'll, we'll make that readily available for folks. Every document that we have access to, the dates as they are finalized, we'll make sure that's up and alive on that web landing page, and that we point people there really going forward. So we'll, we'll work with our, our team on that and work with Dan MGT on that as well.
Dr. Highlander.
Thank you. I know our time's short, I'll try to be brief. I am, I'm a little bit concerned about, I'd say a third, 30, 40% of our people are not real tech savvy, and everything is done electronically that I can perceive. Also, it bothers me that people can't ask per se questions. And I realize it's not efficient, but there are people that have real questions about their community. Ms. Hill brought some up, and, and I would agree with what she said, that a lot of them really want to have some immediate feedback on their questions rather than, and I'm sure you'll do concise questions, but people really want to know and be able to voice their own questions. I would hope that maybe the, I worked, I had to fight through that 80-page report and, and look at it, and I spent a lot of time on it, I was sure all of our board members did. But a lot of our people may have trouble doing that, and a concise summary, I think, would be, would be very helpful. But, but I am concerned that we need to somehow reach out to those folk who are not real computer savvy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jones.
Dr. Highlander mentioned that, about the people wanting to ask questions and not being able to ask questions. And it seems to me, I know the questions that I've received as it relates to what was presented for District Five, were not necessarily to, were not necessarily for MGT, they were for us as a board. And so I believe that maybe, I'm not sure if that's what you're receiving, but I know they were more like, well, what are you all going to do? Not what is MGT recommending. And so I think maybe that's something that we should look at as a, as a nine-member body as to what we would like to do. And we can have our own forum, we can all nine get together somewhere, and people can come and ask us questions about what we feel as it relates to what's being recommended for each of our districts or as the district as a whole. So I think that's something that we should take the initiative to do as a nine-member body. And even though we have MGT as consultants and they've, they're here to be TA for us and that sort of thing, there is an accountability that we have directly to the people and not through them as consultants.
And the only thing I'll add is that however you look at this report, it's somewhere between 850 and $1.3 billion. And so there's a funding component that exists here, and so I think there's much more robust conversation to be had about, you know, us partnering with our county commission and being a part of these conversations on the very front end. But Dan and his team have and are doing a really good job of giving us a lot of context and information, and so we definitely will work to make sure the public has access to all that information in a very concise way and, and work alongside them in that way.
Mrs. Thurman.
Oh, yes, I was, just reiterate what Paretza said. We do get a lot of things, and like I said, it doesn't seem like the board's had a whole lot of input on any of this. It seems like we were given the presentation, and now we're going to go straight to the public. Well, it doesn't really seem like we've had a whole lot of input in any of this to maybe give our thoughts, and I just kind of feel like we're kind of out of the loop here sometime. And I think, like you say, we get, we're the ones who get the phone calls, so I'd like to be kept a little bit more in the loop, please. Give you some of our thoughts.
Dr. Highlander.
I will say this, we appreciate your, your professional efforts, and you've done a great job, but I mean, the final result is going to be voted on by the members of this board. We will make, I mean, we will all make the final result. We do appreciate you, but I want our general public to know that we're not doing everything they say, we're doing, we'll take what we think is best and then do it from there.
No other questions, comments? Mr. Schmidt, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thurman.
All right, that ends our work session. We'll take just a quick break, and then we will roll into, we'll open our next meeting and roll into executive session. Yeah, yeah, we'll take a quick break.